Okay, so welcome everybody and thank you for being here. This is our, one of the last legs on our world tour, or at least California tour of CSCA. Your Executive Director Dave Low and DFO Pace have been, we have been traveling all over the place, bringing this Town Hall meeting to the members. And the reason why we're doing this is because, well, we didn't think that it was right just to send an email, or whatever, to talk about these two very important, or all the important things we're going to be talking about this evening. And we figured that we would take it to you guys, you guys could see it firsthand, so you didn't believe some rumors that you might hear out there, you heard it from us directly, and you're also able to ask questions. So at any time during this presentation, please, please, please feel free to ask a question, raise your hand. Also, for those of you who love to take notes, feel free to take all the notes you'd like, but to save yourself some time and trouble, all the stuff you see here this evening is already on the website, and even the questions that have been asked at all the other meetings, they're all on our website, but if you feel comfortable taking notes because you just need to do that, cool. We also wanted to bring this to you because the Board, we just wanted you to know that your Board of Directors is taking all of this information you're about to see extremely seriously. We have already started cutting our own budgets, the Board has cut some of their release time days already for next year, and depending on what happens at conference, they might even cut more. They haven't heard that yet, but I just told two of them right now. So just letting you all know that this is a very, very serious part. I've been telling people that I feel that CSCA currently is at the crossroads. This is a, this is a time in our existence that the powers that be in our political world have decided that they need to, I'm just going to say, play games with everybody who's in a union, and they just are not friends with us right now. So we have to do things to try to protect ourselves. We're going to ask Dave Low to come up, and he will start us off.
Thanks Ben. So we do have some other staff here, we're not going to introduce them all, but we know we're very fortunate to, you know, have the opportunity for some of the staff to attend the Town Hall since we're at headquarters. The other Town Halls have been all up and down the state, so this is the first opportunity for our headquarters staff to come and hear what we're talking about. So today's agenda, we're going to go over some of the challenges that CSCA faces. President Valdopena will cover the dues fairness resolution and the service fee payer conversion, and we'll take questions and answers. But as Ben said, if you have questions during the presentation, we're happy to answer them whenever they come up, so don't feel shy about interrupting the presentation, just raise your hand. Frank Palito, our Director of Communications, has a microphone, and he'll bring it over, and you can ask any questions that you have. This Town Hall process is really about getting membership input onto these issues. None of the things that we're talking about today have been done, they're all things that are in the works, so the dues fairness resolution will be coming up at conference, the conference delegates will vote on that. This is your opportunity to share any questions you have or concerns. So, the challenges that we're facing, you know, this is not something that is just a CSCA challenge issue, it's really all organized labor across the United States. We've been under attack for years, and the number of unionized workers has reduced year after year for a number of years, until the point where the public sector unions are really kind of the, the unions that have been holding up the labor movement. You know, it used to be you could go out and get a good union job at a grocery store, you know, or, or another unionized workplace, and you could raise a family, and put your kids through school, and buy a house, and those type of jobs are just starting to go away. A big part of that is, is they've taken away pensions from a lot of the private sector workforce, and forced them into 401K plans. You know, now we have this gig economy, so, you know, people who used to drive and be Teamsters are being replaced by people who are driving Ubers for less than minimum wage, and basically working for themselves. And that type of economy has created downward pressure on wages. We're starting to see the middle class just shrink. The middle class is 20% smaller now than it was 50 years ago, and, and that's because of this type of downward pressure, and because of the shrinkage of unions. So, the other thing we're seeing is, is we're seeing an organized attack against labor from the super rich. We're seeing it all across the United States, we're seeing it in Washington DC, but we've seen it in other states. More than 25 states in the United States now are what they call right-to-work states. Right-to-work is just kind of a misleading name for an anti-union organization that is trying to stack the deck against workers, and take away workers' freedom to choose a labor union. And the law as it stands now is that, once the employees democratically vote to bring in a labor union, the union is required to represent everybody. It's called the duty of fair representation. And under the duty of fair representation, you negotiate a contract, it applies to everybody. Somebody gets in trouble, files a grievance, gets fired, gets in trouble, the union represents them. Doesn't matter whether they're a member or not a member, the duty of fair representation says you represent everybody. The flip side of the duty of fair representation is, is that in California, unions can charge a fee for the service of representation. It's called a fair share service fee. In right-to-work states, that fair share service fee is taken away, and people can basically get all the representational rights, and get the rights and benefits of a contract, but don't have to pay union dues. Now we're starting to see that come under attack, both across the nation, and we're seeing it also in the courts. And ASME, in Wisconsin, when they went right-to-work, ASME was the biggest union in Wisconsin, they had 100,000 members. After right-to-work was passed, their membership went down to 20,000 members, they lost, they lost 80,000 members. We're seeing at the national level, with the election of President Trump, these attacks go from education to labor and across the board. He has appointed Betsy DeVos as the Secretary of Education. This is a person who's never attended public schools, her kids never attended public schools. She basically has said that, that her goal is to give people the right to choose to leave public schools, to go to religious schools, and to subsidize them through vouchers. She's also taken on college students, and is cutting down on the amount of money that are available for college student loans. She's a very anti-education Secretary of Education. It's unbelievable that somebody who, who is so anti-public education is now our national Secretary of Education. Also, the President appointed Neil Gorsuch to the Supreme Court. Now, the Supreme Court was a 5-4 anti-labor Supreme Court, right up until Antonin Scalia passed away, and that deadlocked the court in a 4-4 tie. Neil Gorsuch breaks that tie, and, and brings the Supreme Court back to an anti-union 5-4 majority. That has big implications for us, because we, we have cases that have gone before the Supreme Court. How many of you heard about the Friedrichs v CTA case? So Friedrichs v CTA basically would make all public sector in the United States right to work. It would, it would take away the ability of unions to charge a fee for service for representation. And that case was accepted by the Supreme Court, and that's when Justice Scalia passed away, and deadlocked the court 4-4. Well, now that it's a 5-4 court, there's another case, well, there's about a dozen cases that are winding their way to the Supreme Court. And the first in line is called Janus versus Asme. And our Chief Counsel, Andy, just notified us today that, that that has been appealed to the Supreme Court, because the Supreme Court session begins in June, and ends in the end of May. So, we expect, so, so since it's one of the early ones that have been appealed to the Supreme Court, we expect that the Supreme Court will vote to accept that case in this year's session, in which case the decision will be issued sometime in this Supreme Court session. They usually issue their decisions in the fall, and then in the spring, in the, in the May, so, so the decision could come down as early as December this year, which is highly likely that they'll take it up early, and, and at that point, if we lose that decision, we will then lose the right to collect fair share service fees. So what is the impact for CSCA? The day that the decision comes down, if it's an adverse decision, we would lose the ability to collect any fees from all the current service fee payers. Currently in CSCA, that number is 24,526, that's how many service fee payers we have today, and that's a much lower number than it was even a year ago. We started with about 18, over 18% service fee payers. Right now, we are at 10.1% service fee payers. So we've reduced our number of service fee payers over the last year, or two years substantially. But even at this number, 24,526, with the average annual dues of $280, we would lose $6.8 million the day of the, of the Supreme Court decision. That doesn't even take into consideration, CSCA members who would then decide that since they currently pay dues, but after the Supreme Court decision, they could still get the same services and representation and pay zero, they might drop their membership. So what we did is, we polled our members, and we asked them, if you could still get represented, and didn't have to pay dues, would you drop your membership? In our poll, 11% of our members told us that they would definitely drop their membership, and 16% said they would probably drop their membership. If you do the math, 11% that would definitely leave is 6.4 million, and 16% that would probably leave is $9.39 million, for a total of just under $23 million exposure to CSCA. So, in sort of what we would consider the worst-case scenario, we would lose $23 million in revenue in CSCA. Now that's out of a budget that's about $68 million, so as you can see, it's over a third of the budget that we are, that we are potentially losing. Which is why, yes.
I would like to know, is that, have you polled everybody in all the unions in California, or just certain areas?
So we polled just CSCA, so other unions are doing their own research and polling, and the exposure at other unions has actually been bigger than this. But what we did in CSCA is, when you do a poll, you do a scientific sample. So the sample that we did in this poll is 1,000 members. A scientific sample is usually between 600 to, you know, or more. If, if the margin of error goes down, the, the, the more you go above 600. So an 800 sample would give you a margin of, a standard deviation of about 3%, plus or minus, and a sample of 1,000 gives you a smaller deviation, so it's about plus or minus 2.5. So this is kind of a 5% error ratio in this, in the sample we used. And CSCA, we actually polled CSCA members, and this poll, the reason we did a larger sample is because we also polled non-members to ask them, you know, why aren't you a member of CSCA, you know, what, what would cause you to sign up? What we did find in, in that poll also, is that many of the people who are not members thought they were members, and would sign up if asked. So that's one of, some of the information we got for the, what helped us convert service fee payers. You're welcome. So, in this conversion, our goal is to get our service fee payers below 10%. As I said, we're at 10.1, and we're closing, we're closing the books and doing the math to find out whether we can get below 10 for our next Board meeting, next Saturday. But in addition to converting service fee payers, we're doing other work. One of the other important things we're doing is, is we're managing our budget. And, you know, we've known this has been coming for a while, or could be coming, and, and much of it hinged on the presidential election. The fact is, is that if Hillary Clinton was elected President, she would not be appointing a, a, a anti-union Supreme Court Justice, and, and this case would have been then decided 5-4 in favor of unions. Now we're pretty confident that it was going to be decided 5-4 against us, because Donald Trump was, was elected President. And when we passed the budget last year at conference, we didn't know who the President was going to be. So we set aside $4 million as a contingency, just to mitigate against this situation. And I know a lot of unions, you know, pretty much banked on, on winning the presidency, we did not, and our, our members, I think, made a smart choice by setting aside $4 million. So this $4 million will help us mitigate the cuts that would occur when we lose membership. We're sponsoring legislation. We've been working with Governor Brown for the last three years, because what we know is that the vast majority of CSCA members sign up at an employee orientation. When you first get hired, and you're signing your insurance papers, and when you get a union membership put in front of you, you're likely to sign that membership at an orientation. 61% of the people in our poll said they signed up at a union orientation, which is a high number, because we don't have mandatory orientation in about half of our contracts. So what we have been doing is, is suggesting that the Governor sign a bill that would make it mandatory for every public employer, not just schools, but cities, counties, the state, to hold an employee orientation for new employees, and to give mandatory union access to those orientations. And we now have a commitment from the Governor to sign that bill, and we're going to be moving it in the Budget Act that will be coming up for a vote this month, and we expect that to become law before June 30th. The other thing we're doing is, we're fighting the expansion and the abuse of charter schools. Charter schools has been kind of like a death of 1,000 cuts for, for public schools. You know, they, they, you know, charter schools started out to be 100 charter schools, experimental schools, and they're supposed to be a Petri dish for finding out, you know, what are some good ideas, and then we would import those ideas into the public schools. Now they're over 10,000. Employees lost to charter schools, there's been hundreds of thousands of students lost to charter schools, and what we're finding is, is charter schools are no longer just an experiment to try to improve public schools, they are basically a, a money-making operation for people that want to take kids out of the public schools, and, and run charter schools. And because of that, they've engaged in a lot of very shady practices. If they don't like the students in their schools, they suspend or expel them, because they maybe don't test as well, or they don't, they're not the type of kids they want in their schools. Public schools have to take all students. Charter schools can expel students, and they don't even have to follow any of the laws, they don't have to report to the parents why they got expelled, how they got expelled, what the process that was used, they don't have to notice things in the Brown Act, they don't have to adhere to the Public Records Act if parents ask for any documentation, they don't even have to follow conflict of interest laws, which means that we have charter schools that are operated and run by superintendents who are also contracting to their own businesses to provide services to schools, businesses of their, of their brother-in-law, their wives, and so we're, we're seeing basically charter schools turning into a profit-making operation at the expense of our students. So we've been pushing legislation to try to correct that situation as well. And we've made cuts during the recession. During the recession, CSCA lost 20,000 members, which was a big hit to our budget. And during that time, in order to balance the budget, we kept 22 positions vacant. We didn't lay anybody off, but we didn't fill 22 positions in CSCA. Since that time, we still have kept almost all of those positions vacant. We haven't restored, we've restored one labor position in the budget, and other than that, 21 positions still remain vacant in CSCA, saving $8 million. The other thing is, is that CSCA Board, and Ben will be talking about the dues fairness resolution. Because we don't know if the dues fairness resolution will pass or fail at conference, we are required to have a balanced budget at the CSCA conference. So we'll be bringing two budgets to the CSCA conference. One budget will be premised on passage of the dues fairness resolution, in which case we can provide, bring a balanced budget with no cuts, no reduction in services, no cuts in training, or other programs and benefits that we provide. But if the dues fairness resolution does not pass at conference, we still have to provide a balanced budget, in which case, we have a second budget that we are prepared to bring, and it, actually, both budgets are on the CSCA website. You can see both of those budgets right now. And the second budget is a budget that cuts about 10% out of the budget, which is not enough to balance the full level of cuts that we expect, but it will at least get us through the next year balancing the budget, and, do you have a question? Yeah?
Will you be able, or will you be showing, will we be going through the budget prior to voting on the dues resolution, so we can see what we're not going to be getting, or what we're going to be losing?
Yes, so on, on, the schedule at conference will be, is always that the budget gets presented on Monday. So before we even start in on the resolutions, the budget will be presented, and the delegates will get to see both the maintenance budget and the cut budget, and we'll have it in front of them. In addition to the fact that any of you can go on the website right now and, and see both of those full budgets, yeah. So what, which budget gets then debated and voted on on Thursday, will be, will depend on what happens with the dues resolution.
So we don't have a conversation regarding the budget during the budget review?
No, that will happen on, that will happen after the resolutions, because we don't know which budget we'll, we will be considering. If, if, if the dues resolution passes, then the, the maintenance budget can be debated. If the dues resolution doesn't pass, the maintenance budget is irrelevant, it's, it has to be a cut budget.
Are we going to have a timed budget session, where it, we get to actually have enough time, and that it's not two pros and two cons, and then move to end debate? We, at one point, I've been around a while, we actually had, you know, two hours, or, you know, two and a half hours for the budget, are we going to?
I think that the budget session has always, they've allotted, like, we generally allot two hours for the budget session, but the delegates control how much time the budget debate occurs. So, after, at any point after a certain number of people have spoken for and against, any delegate can, could go to the mic and move to close debate, and then the delegates then choose whether they want to close debate or not. So I know that they've, they've, ended debate.
Do we have a solid two hours? Is that a possibility, that we have the chunk of time that says two hours, and that you cannot end debate prior to the end unless there are no?
That would require a change to the conference rules. The delegates would have to vote on that.
Well, okay, I vote yes.
Okay, so clarification on Jill's question. So the time on Monday, where we're not actually debating the budget, we're just getting a review of the two different budgets, is that just going to be a set time where we can, where we can, where you're going to walk through and explain both of the budgets and what the differences are, and that will be a set time where all the information is given, and, and not be, not subject to the rules of debate?
That's correct. So on Monday, I'm required as the Executive Director to present the budget on Monday, and I will present both budgets on Monday, and walk through the details of both budgets. And then, there won't be debate and discussion on Monday. Then, start, after the officers, presentations of the officers who are running, then we will start into resolutions, and the dues resolution will be the first resolution that's presented. That will receive its full debate and outcome. Once, once all the resolutions are done, that's when the budget will come up, because the budget is really contingent on what happens with the resolutions.
For us senior citizens who don't have a lot of computer knowledge, you keep saying on our website, most of the time I can't even get on the website, the other thing is, the budget comes up, it's little tiny print.
So I think you can make it bigger on your computer.
I don't have a touch one.
But if you want a hard copy, just call, or email us, and we will get you a hard copy.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. Any other questions? So basically, the, this Town Hall process is, is to get this exact kind of input, to try to get the information to you. It's like you said, if you're, if you can't get the information on CSCA.com, we're happy to, to mail information to you, and, you know, the information will be out there at conference as well. But, you know, we, we thought it was really important, we actually adopted the budget early this year, so that when, so we could have this Town Hall process, we could start it early and get as much information in front of the members as possible.
Duece Fairness Resolution. So at the beginning, you guys heard that the Board of Directors is taking this dues fairness resolution very, very seriously. You've heard some of the reasoning, and some of it is here. We basically want the dues fairness resolution to keep CSCA where it is now, and, without any cuts, and the Board has already taken a lot of action to manage their own travel, their own release time. They have stopped attending as many meetings as they were attending before, because they're trying to just cut down as much as they can before conference. So currently, we have had two dues resolutions in the last 25 years. The last one was 13 years ago in 2004. Current dues structure, our cap is at 1.5%, with a monthly salary cap of $2,450. The maximum monthly dues you can currently pay is $36.75. The dues fairness resolution structure would now be 1.5% of your salary, with a monthly salary cap of $3,150 per month, maximum monthly dues 4,725. So way back in 1992, our monthly cap was $1,900, and the maximum monthly dues that you can pay was $28.50. In 2004, the cap was raised by the delegates at conference to $2,450, and the maximum monthly dues is $36.75. Again, this year, if the delegate should happen to pass the dues fairness resolution, is $3,150, with a maximum, that doesn't mean everybody's paying 4,725, because the reason I say these things is because these are questions that have been asked. The maximum you can pay is $47.25. Again, the objective of the dues fairness resolution is just to maintain all of the services and everything that CSCA currently gives to our members. Big at the very bottom, anyone earning less than $2,450 per month will not experience a dues increase. A vast majority of our members are part-timers, a lot of them are here. The calls that I have been receiving have almost all been from part-timers, saying, my dues is going up, I only work two and a half hours a day, why would you do that to me? And I explain to them that theirs won't go up, and then suddenly they say, oh, okay, no problem. This is the CSCA dues structure as it currently is, and I'm truly, I was surprised at some of our Town Hall meetings, because a lot of our members didn't know this part. The blue line is where our current dues salary schedule is. 1.5% goes with a $24,500 or $24.50 per month. So as you see, the more money you make, you pay a less of a percentage of your dues. We actually use this number, 85,000, we actually have members that are, that make over $100,000 a year, and they're mostly IT people at, at some of our schools. They are paying somewhere in the neighborhood of probably about 0.25% of their salary per month. I can use myself as a guinea pig, I make about here. So I'm paying about 0.64% of my paycheck every month to dues, when some of my brothers and sisters who are down here are actually paying 1.5%. This is the way that it has been for a very, very, very long time.
So, doesn't it seem like it's a little backwards? And that, and I'm, I'm, I'm in some of the higher range, I make more than $3,150 a month. I don't mind paying more on my dues, and I understand how you figured out your, how much you were paying, it's a rate, it's a ratio to your salary, based on that cap. So, I don't know, personally, I wouldn't mind paying more, and not having that downward curve, but have somehow figure out the curve is a proportion, is equitable, depending on your salary that you make, that everyone contributes X percentage, instead of this downward slope where it just seems wrong. It should be different.
This is the same, almost exact statement that has been coming up at every Town Hall This system, somebody asked me at one time, why is there such a large gap? Well, through a little bit of research, I found that way, 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 way back, most of us made around the same amount of money. A mechanic made a, made probably the same amount of money as a custodian, and the custodian made the same amount of money as a secretary, and, you know, pretty close. Well, over the years, through negotiating and bargaining and everything else, people's salaries start to spread. They didn't have IT people way back then. So these are all, you know, a lot of job categories that have come open, that our members are making a lot more money. So that has caused this to happen. Jill?
But on the other-
But on the other hand, I mean, we can't, these people have been paying the lesser dues and, you know, just like anybody else, you know, they are living paycheck to paycheck. It may be a higher amount that they get, but they've also bought more expensive homes, they have car payments, the kids are in college, you know. So this is, is just doing a little bit is, is fair and equitable because you can't move everybody. I keep hearing people say, well, everybody should pay 1.5%. But if you've been paying 0.43, now all of a sudden 1.5%, you think fair share, people are going to leave and become, you know, not even fair share payers? You raise the dues from 0.43 to 1.5 and they're not going to get out of there fast enough. So, you know, it does have to be something that is comparable and, you know, maybe in a few years, you know, then a little bit more. But, you know, these people that are making, you know, believe it or not, that are making 100,000 a year are still possibly living paycheck to paycheck, no different than me.
And this, almost your exact statement has come up at a lot of the other town halls. And it's because, you know, what also has come up is a lot of people have said things like, okay, like I'll just use myself as, I already showed you guys where I'm at. I'm not living totally paycheck to paycheck and all of that stuff. So it wouldn't harm me personally to do this, but I completely understand everything that you're saying right now. Some of our members who are making 80, $90,000 exactly. This is why the board put the deuce fairness resolution because we figured doing 1.5% across the board was going to cause, the likelihood of it totally passing was going to be less than this passing. So it's gonna, it would move me, for instance, I would now be paying about, I don't know, 0.82%. So that's moving it to a little more fair, that's why we call it deuce fairness resolution. So, did you have a question?
Okay, I was just wondering what percentage of our members are actually carrying the bulk of the amounts that's brought in? I would assume that those people who are paying that low, low, low percentage aren't really a lot of people. I would assume the majority would be falling like pretty much where I am. And so I don't see where that would make much of a difference. You know what I'm saying?
Majority of our dues comes from probably these people right here? Yeah. So these, the members that are right here, that's where majority of our dues comes from.
Most of us are paying pretty much the same percentage.
So you can see where you are and see where your percentage would be when you, if we passed the dues resolution. So here we go, oh, Rowena.
What I'm hearing is exact things I heard when we had the last dues increase. And I can't remember if we called it fair share or something like that. And we actually went till midnight discussing this. So be prepared, bring your pillow, bring your blankie because it'll go on and on and on. And it's hard to convince people that they're, we do a dues increase.
So irregardless of what's been said by Dave and Keith and everybody else about all the Supreme Court decisions and the money that we might be losing or we probably will be losing, very shortly, the board of directors was going to have to bring a dues resolution to you guys anyway. And here's the reason, because the cost of doing business over the last 14 years has literally doubled. Everybody in this room knows that you go to the grocery store, your dozen eggs doesn't cost the same as it did 14 years ago, or a gallon of gas, or anything else. So CSEA also is experiencing the exact same thing. Our annual conference back then, it cost $621,000. It is now almost $1.2 million to have conference every year. All of our member training programs, $1 million, a little over a million, they are now almost $2 million for our trainings. Release time, for those of you, and I'm looking around the room, most of you probably know what release time is, but I've had to explain it at the other ones. Release time is when the association asks you to do something for us and, and we pay your district for your time off of work. Back then, that bill was over $662,000. It is now almost $1.5 million for release time every year. The utilities on our buildings, $155,000 back then, it's almost $300,000 now. This one, I don't know why this one always is crazy for me, but the gas for our vehicles that all of our labor reps, everybody uses, back then, $215,000, it is now almost $450,000 just for the gas for our cars alone. This has come up at a few of the, few of our meetings. How many of you, is anyone in here think that your conference registration pays for your time at conference? So, what?
Just like we haven't had a dues increase for a long time, it's definitely time to do a conference resolution, a conference registration fee increase.
Tried that this year and people absolutely lost their minds.
Who, I didn't?
Trust me, we.
Well, then you thought.
The board of directors was good, was going to raise the registration fee from 125 to 150. And they, we actually pulled it because of the amount of negativity that we received from the membership.
Give me their numbers.
It was a whole lot of numbers.
So this is the first time we've heard that you've tried that. And I'm wondering who you tried that with because did you do, did you do a survey?
No, 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 no. We, it was a board item. It was actually already a board item. So members saw it on the website that, you know, like you get the GIB that says what's going on at the board meeting. It was there. And members saw it, started calling their area directors and screaming and yelling. And so we actually said, is it actually worth for us to do this because they're going to scream? And, no, I mean, there, I mean, it was nastiness and being honest. So we decided that, you know what, we're just going to not do the $150 this year. Part of it was because we also knew that we were going to do the dues resolution. So we decided we'll wait on this to see what happens in the future. Yeah, it really doesn't bring in a lot of money. But the thing is about conference, your, your registration fee hardly pays for anything because it costs over $900 for each delegate to attend conference. Over 900 bucks. And you're going to see at conference this year, there's going to be a presentation about conference and how much conference costs and all of that stuff. Cost cutting measures since the Great Recession, these have been $7.1 million per year. The negotiated, we negotiated pension modifications for all of our staff. We negotiated mandatory staff contributions to their health and welfare benefits, eliminated cell phone stipends for personal cell phone use and purchased cell phones for key staff. We imposed 10 furlough days for CSEA management, but they are no longer taking those 10 days of, but they did. We eliminated three CSEA staff management positions. One of them, Roy Ramos, for those of you who didn't know Roy. Roy's job was all of our facilities, he was in charge of all of our facilities and he was in charge of our big print shop over here. So when Roy left, we had to think about, how are we going to find somebody that has those two skills? And that was probably, we weren't going to find anybody that has those two skills. It's almost really hard to find people that have print shop experience anyway. So we decided to eliminate his position and some of the duties have been given to other managers here. And Frank took over some of them over there and Steve took over the facilities part. So that is now saving some of it. One of the positions is the Director of Governmental Relations. Dave is doing two jobs right now. He's doing, he's still the Director of Governmental Relations and he's our executive director. So we're saving that money. And who's the other position? Michael Ganley is, he retired and we just never filled his position. Yeah, so his duties got split between Keith and Bob Johnson. So this question has been asked, so we put it on the slide. When they saw the utility bills, they were like, well, wait a minute, have we ever thought about going solar? So our CSEA headquarters is now solar. We have, if you've ever go upstairs, you look, there's almost, you can't see the roof anymore, it's all solar panels. The problem is though, is the other, our field offices, even though we own them, how many, is anybody here in a homeowners association? Okay, so they're not in a homeowners association, but you know at the home, in your homeowners association, you can't paint your house purple if you want to unless it's okay. We can't put solar power on probably most of our offices because the other places around aren't doing it or until it's okay for everybody, then we will be able to do it. But currently, it's not something we can do. We reduced 22 CSEA positions through attrition and we are now conducting the field staff training in the north and the south so that we save money on travel and housing and meal expenses. These are investments that we have made to the membership over the last few years and also brought some programs back. Our board training costs $40,000. The member intern program costs $385,000. And people, yeah, thank you for saying that, Michelle. People have said, wow, that's a lot of money. But for those of you who were at conference three years ago or so, you remember, a lot of members got up to the microphones, they go to the order and said, we need labor reps, we need labor reps, we need labor reps. And, you know, guys, it wasn't that we were not trying to hire labor reps. Most of you don't know because it's just not stuff that we just bring out all the time, but we hired labor reps. And some of them, this might be shocking, but some of them did not show up to work the first day that they were hired. Some of them showed up the first day, didn't come back the second day. You know, and it's, you know, it's not easy hiring labor reps from outside. We have noticed that when we hire our members as labor reps, they have a tendency to stay. So, Executive Director Lo and I sat down and it was just really funny because I used to be the chair of the member intern program and I had all these ideas that I wanted to put forward and it just, I never got to do it. But suddenly, when you become president, you can do a lot of things that you didn't used to be able to do before. So he and I sat down and, you know, it's funny that Dave and I were talking and we had nearly identical ideas for the member intern program. And it has now been revamped and the committee itself has also added some things to it and everything and it has turned out to be a much better program. And our members, we had five interns this last go around and we hired two so far. And there's, we may be hiring some more. And the young lady in the back over there, she was one of our interns. And currently, we have three interns out in the field. The reason we don't have five was because the structure has now become one that we're just not putting five people out there if they're not qualified. So the committee felt that there was only three qualified this time to go through and that's what we're doing right now. There's three interns out there. So that program is open to anybody who would like to try to apply. And you actually have to apply to the program and you actually have to go through a bunch of processes to get into the program. It's not easy. So just letting y'all know. Advanced treasurer's training, $31,000. Our super session costs us $230,000 yearly. Training of the member trainers, it's almost $50,000. Our single subject trainings costs almost $33,000. The leadership institutes are $100,000, that we do five of them per year and they're $20,000 apiece. Officer skills training costs us $50,000. The regional audit bureau training is $12,500. And you do notice this is a partial list. Regional representative training, I brought regional representative training back this year. It has, it has been missing for quite some time because it was one of those things that we cut years ago. And, you know, even when I was first vice president, I noticed a lot of the problems that we were having, a lot of the complaints and everything that were coming across not only my desk, but now as president, my desk. I realized, you know, this is something that a regional rep could have taken care of. And then I said, you know what, it's because these people have not been trained in a very long time and we appoint them to these offices and we're not giving them training. So now our training department did an amazing job of training them this last time. Unfortunately, I truly wanted to do an advanced regional representative training this year, but I am just not going to until I find out what happens with the dues resolution. So that's something that's still in the back of my mind, but we got to see. The chapter presidents' leadership, CPLP, is $15,000. OI, $88,000. Member unity program, $172,000. Do we have any chapters here tonight? You've been one? Well, there you go, great. Community leadership academy, this one is almost $39,000, but this one saddens me the last couple of years because this is a program that you can go through to help you if you want to be a school board member, if you want to be a senator, if you want to, whatever. The governor also appoints a lot of people like Mr. Hawkins back there. And this will also help you get through some of that. Last year, we had four people go through the program, which was extremely disappointing to me. This year, we had two. So we're going to start thinking about what it, what we need to do to get members to participate. The town halls have actually helped with that because a lot of members have, we've never even heard of it before. So they're now looking to see about it. So this is, we might have more people. Our resolutions workshop that we just had was about $188,000. Maintenance and operations academy, $15,000. We did five of them this year. In the past, we have just been doing two, one in the north, one in the south. Well, we also have people that live further south and we also have people that live further north. So, and people in the middle of the state. So I, Bill Hagar is our chair of that committee and I said, Bill, I want five spread throughout the state so that more people can be trained. And that's exactly what he did this year. The CalGen summit, $65,000. For those of you who don't know what the CalGen is, it's for our members that are 35 and under. But the summit itself is open to anybody. And this year, we actually had some more seasoned members that went to the, that went to the summit. One of them actually told me, okay, I didn't find this secret thing that they were doing or anything. She only went because she thought it was a, some kind of a cult, I guess, I don't know. The parent educator conference costs us $120,000. But I would say that that cost is probably a minimum 50%, somewhere between 50% and 100% under what it should be. But we get subsidized by a lot of our vendors and that. And so it doesn't cost us as much. But we had over 1,300 members, parent educators went through that program this year.
In regards to the resolutions workshop cost, is that for the phone, video, whatever you guys, I mean, I'm sure you didn't fly somewhere and get everybody in one meeting room and do the resolutions workshop, did you do it on the phone?
No, we did it here in this room. Yeah. That's where all the cost came from. Union steward trainings, $40,000. All of our know your rights trainings, $11,000. Bargaining academy trainings, $20,000. Site rep trainings, $8,700. Classified school employee week, $119,000. The communications academy and the website trainers program, these are two programs that are extremely helpful. And your members need to attend these things because it'll help you communicate to them better and help them communicate to everybody else much better. you communicate to them better, and help them communicate to everybody else much better. So, our total for this partial list of our trainings is at $1,982,000, and that's just for these trainings alone. So, we asked 114 other unions who represent classified employees to share their dues structure with us. There are several unions out there that represent classified employees, SEIU being one, and AFT, and actually, CTA. And the reason I say, 'cause some of you look at me like, "I know that they do," but a lot of our members don't know that CTA and AFT represent our members. 67 of those 114 have yearly, have a yearly annual max that is higher than CSEA's current. 27 of them have no cap at all. Here's some examples of the unions right here. CSEA, this is the one that we explained earlier, our current dues proposal. So, you see, we would be paying a maximum of $47.25. AFSMI in Oakland, they, their members pay $528 per year. AFT in Oxnard, they pay $520 per year. CTA Lakeport, $961.88 per year, that's $96 a month. If they make between these two numbers here, they are paying $564 per year. CTA Mendocino, $769.50 per year. Between those two, it's $451.56. SEIU, 1.5%, no cap. The Teamsters in Palm Springs, they do their hourly wage times 2.25, and they have no cap. And the reason we put those on there, not only because their structure's different than a lot of them, Palm Springs used to be CSEA, and they fell for the, "Hey, come with us, we will treat you better, and we will, we will lower your dues." And they told the truth, they actually did. When they went with them, they lowered their dues, and then their dues started going up, and it's now that. They have, over the last couple of years, asked if they could come back, and we unfortunately have to tell them, "No, we can't. Not, we're being mean, we don't want you. It's just, we have deals with some of these unions that we won't take theirs, and they won't take ours." So, this right here, picture that this right here says, "CSEA Current." So, this is where we are right now, our dues structure compared to all of these unions. This one up here is the Fresno Teachers Association. Their classified staff are paying $1,111 a year. And that's not unheard of, because in the city where I live, the city of Redlands, the classified employees there are CTA. And one day, because unlike us, CTA just says, "Hey, next week, you guys are gonna start paying more money," 'cause they don't get to vote, at least, most of them, from what I understand. So, the members of the Redlands School District, which are right here, they actually got notices that their dues were going to $126 a month. And a lot of them are my friends, 'cause I live in the city, so they're called and said, "Hey, how can we go with CSEA, 'cause this is ridiculous, we're not paying this?" And again, I had to say, "Well, I'm sorry, you guys are with CTA, and we can't take them." So, I gave them some info, and their dues is now $65 per month. But their dues went up from like $44 or something to $65 per month. They actually, I guess, put fear into CTA somehow, and didn't have to worry about it. But this line right here is supposed to say, "CSEA Dues Fairness Resolution." And it would, so if we pass the dues resolution, we would still be in the bottom 25%, I guess, of these unions. We have done an amazing job of service fee conversions. I am so proud of you guys, all the staff and the members. You guys should give yourselves a round of applause, 'cause that's, that's an amazing job. We are currently at 10.3% service fee payers. Hopefully, that number will be under 10 soon. But, we started off a couple of years ago at 18.6%. So, the work that has been done has just been absolutely amazing. We really would feel a lot more comfortable if we were between these two numbers right here. It would be, I mean, hovering around 7% would be a perfect number that we would just love to see. Some people might say, "Oh, that's impossible," but we have field offices right now that are below 7% membership. We're still gonna continue this, regardless of what happens, we're still gonna be continuing, dealing with this for, until up to conference. And I'm, hopefully, by this next board meeting, next Saturday, I'll see a sheet that says 9 point...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow I'll see it? All right, so tomorrow, I'll see a, I'll see a number that's hopefully lower than that These are challenges that are facing CSEA. We need to get, nearly every single day, I get emails from Dave, or Keith, or a lot of my other contacts, that some person out there is trying to take away your pensions. And this is just something they're gonna continue doing. So, we need to make sure the CSEA stays strong, so that we can fight a lot of these things. There is increasing healthcare costs. Our calpers, we have our elections coming up. We need to make sure, when you get your ballot in the mail, that you guys vote. And Michael Bilbrey is our endorsed candidate. This year, you can not just get your ballot and throw it off to the side, you can actually take your phone, or your computer, or your iPad, and vote. And if you have voted at our CSEA conference for association officers over the years, the last few years, it's very similar. You log in, and it has the ballot, and you click on Michael's name, and a screen pops up that says, "Are you sure this is the person you wanna vote for?" You click "Yes," it takes you to the next screen and shows his name with a little check by it, and another screen says, "Are you sure this is the person you wanna vote for?" And you click "Yes" again, and then it says something like, "You're about to submit your ballot. Are you sure this is the ballot you wanna submit?" So, make sure you do it correctly. School Board Elections, this is the easiest way to make life easier for you guys in your chapters. Getting new school board members that are friendly to your, to CSEA members. My school, I always tell the story about my own school board, my own chapter. We had, actually had, school board members that slept through the meetings, and they only woke up when it was time to vote, and they knew what they needed to vote on, and they would just wake up and yell "Yes" after somebody pushed them to wake them up. It was horrible, and we weren't getting anywhere. So, we decided that we were gonna flip the board, and we actually did it in one year. And suddenly, all of a sudden, there was money, there was raises, there was more vacation time. My longevity went from stopping at Step E, or F, or whatever it was, although I, we now have, I think, a 30-year step. So, a lot of good things came from it. One of the craziest things that came from it was, nearly every single district, that district office administrator was fired within a year, that, after these people took over, because they did not like anything that they were doing. And the only person that didn't get fired was the superintendent, but he quit, because he knew he was gonna get fired too. Your bargaining and contract campaigns, still extremely important. Layoffs and district cutbacks, the, I don't even like using expansion of charter schools, I call it the disease of charter schools. You know, currently, in the state of Wisconsin, they are funding charter schools at a higher rate than they're, than they're funding the public schools in Wisconsin. You heard Dave talk about the vouchers and all the budget cuts. The Governor's Race, we need to have another friend in that office, very, very important. School Funding Ballot Measure, we need to get another one of those going. So, as we said earlier, you guys have already asked questions, you could ask questions now, once again. If you're too shy to ask questions in the open, you can send an email to, preferably all three of us, so we don't have to share it with each other. Send an email to us with your question people have. I wanna thank you all for being here today. Thank all the staff members from here in the office, too, that stayed. So, thank you guys for being here today. Thank you.